So now, in terms of rural, for the rural areas, it's a bit different. They're operating on what we call a flat fee scheme. So the rural areas will measure their productive footprint and see what range they fall into. Whatever range they fall into, then they'll pay that, they'll pay that flat fee there. So if they measured their productive footprint and they got 1,900 square foot, then their access fee is automatically $750. So the rural is a more straightforward scheme. So they don't operate by matrix and zones. Alright, so we're looking at the non-brick-and-mortar businesses. And these were, uh, these are businesses that don't have a physical space. So, zoom, can you zoom in to license, the second column? So if you look at the second column, it gives a maximum fee of what can be declared for each municipality. So in terms of commercial travelers, there's a maximum fee that can be declared of $250 per truck per annum. You're looking at, for example, promoters, a maximum of $200 per annum. Taxi operator, a maximum of $1 per day, right? So there are different categories and different maximum fee that can be declared per category, per municipality. So like I mentioned, it varies based on which district or which municipality you're located in. So if we go to Balmopan, we can see that travelers, it's $200. For for peddlers, it's $200. So the maximum that they can charge for peddlers is 300. What Balmopan declared was 200. In terms of promoters, what was the, what the maximum they can declare is 200. What they declared was the 200, right? Again, all this information will be published for you all to, to get a hold of the information. Alright, so that's basically how to calculate your trade license access fee. The ministry is in the process of working to digitize this process. So eventually you can apply from your business, from your homes, and not to traffic the council and so forth, right? So you'll be able to pay online and apply online and receive a certificate. In terms of the villages, the villages pay at the Treasury Department. Applications for the villages are at our Ministry of Rural Transformation offices, countrywide. So if your village, uh, your business is in a village in the Kaya District, we have offices in San Ignacio and Balmopan that accepts application. They'll guide you through the process since the first time it's been rolled out in the villages. Payments for villages are made to the Treasury Department. They'll give you the specific account to make that deposit. And the copy of the payment slip goes to our office and so forth. In terms of the municipalities, your payment goes directly to the town, to the city council. So I hope that was a clear explanation of how to calculate your fees. Um, we'll, I'll hand over back to the master of ceremony for the question and answer session.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. And I hope that was helpful to everybody. At this time, we'd like to move on to the questions. I will have a representative from the Trade Department to answer your questions. There's a mic in the middle. If anybody has a question, they can just approach the mic, ask your question, and we'll do our best to answer either from the local government side or the city council side. In the meantime, we have some brochures that we would like to pass out to everyone that has some more information, some of the similar information that you've just heard about from local government. And if you look in the back of that brochure, there will also be a QR code that will send you directly to some of the diagrams, diagrams that you saw up here. So if you were not able to make it out properly, you can go on that, on the Balmopan City Council webpage. And they will, and we will have those diagrams and the, the chart with the rates are on there. So you'll be able to find it on there as well, okay? So if we have any questions, feel free to go up. Just make your way to the microphone and ask your question.
Good night. Thanks to the Holy Spirit, the source of all good inspiration. I am somewhat of a person who are interested, who are interested in gaming community, right? Video gaming community. I have many of my time spent doing video gaming. Let's say that's an example of a non, a person with a non non, er, non, non-era, non-era assessment zone, right? What would be like my rating for like, say, five year, or five year period, or three year period? I didn't calculate it right.
Okay, okay, I'll try to answer your question. Thank you very much. I think he's concentrating more on a peddler license that he's asking about. So you basically qualify as a peddler for the peddler license, okay? Which is 300 per annum, per year, okay? Anybody else? Please make your way to the microphone.
Hi, good night, everybody. I just have a question. So if you have a brick-and-mortar business and you also have an online
Can you speak up a little bit so we can hear?
Yeah, so if you have an on, a brick-and-mortar business and you also have an online presence, how is that taxed?
What was the first business?
Okay, so that would, um, you would need to have two different trade for that because one would be online and the other one would need to have a square foot. So that would be two separate trades that you would need to apply. Um, the online business is $100 per year. Um, and all taxes, um, all accounts must be paid off. That would include property, household garbage, and the trade.
Answered the question? Go ahead.
Uh, just very quickly, good night. What is the deadline for new businesses? And two, uh, just a suggestion. Uh, for example, the young lady said that they will publish the presentation. But I noticed it had a attendance list. So maybe you could forward it on that email to make it more... Thank you.
Okay, so the deadline for applications for a new business or renewal will be, um, 14th of November. In the act book for this year, it says 15th of November, but that would be a Saturday. So we, we are promoting it for the 14th of November. Any other questions?
Nothing? Anybody else? No? Okay, if there's no more questions, um, please, uh, know that you are always able to come to the Balmopan City Council. Our, uh, Trade Department office is always there to, to help and to guide you through the process. If you have any questions at the time of application, um, do not hesitate to either call us at the Balmopan City Council or come on in to our offices and we are there to assist you through the process, okay? And, um, like local government said, um, we're here to work with everyone in the business community. And we're, we're here to make sure that it's a, um, everybody understands the transition and everything that's happening with this new trade regime, okay? So be certain that nobody else has any questions. The mayor has something he would like to say.
Yes, I just wanted to add one, eh, point. The Balmopan City Council is working on a, on a digital approach to the application process. So we should have, uh, the platform ready and advertised right around the ending of October, 30th, 31st of October, so that it's ready for the 1st of November. Alright, so I'm just mentioning it, that we will be, uh, executing an online application approach, alright?
Thank you, mayor. So I think we're a little bit ahead of local government with the online. Um, so yes, go ahead, please.
Good night. About the online platform, when, when that is, um, launched, will the in-house or actually going in person be discontinued completely? Or it'll be running simultaneously until further notice?
Um, we will still continue, you can still come into, uh, in-house and do it in-house. The online, uh, application was just to facilitate and for us to have a more effective and efficient system for application.
Okay, and in the case that, well, if they're running simultaneously, will, do you have like a tentative? Or when that is announced, will there be maybe a deadline as to, maybe in a year time, they'll no longer accept in-house? You'll be fully online or something like that? How would that work out?
One of the purposes of this move to the online approach is because we're going to start, uh, geo-tagging every business. So with that, even if you go in person into the office, we will be capturing that data online because of the geo-tag. So it's a, it's an additional step that we're starting to move towards.
So basically, we'll be creating, sorry for, for the question. We'll be creating profiles for the business, right? So moving forward, your business would be logging in and paying, so you could see a backtrack or
Not as yet, not as yet. For now, it is specifically just an application, the application process being digitized for the additional benefit of geo-tagging.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sure, go ahead.
Good night. Um, quick question. Reference new businesses, is there an incentive for early registration? And is there a fee or a sanction for late registration? And is it a percentage of the current new prices that you guys are gonna give us?
So to answer, to answer that question, there's no late or early incentives. Um, but, um, what we usually, you know, advise is that if you're, if you want to apply and have to get approval quicker, then you would need to pay for like a special meeting for $150, or you can either wait for the quarterly meetings that we have.
You cannot operate without a trade license, okay? So there is a penalty if you do not get your trade license and you're not legally allowed to operate the beginning of the year, January, is it January 1st, you're supposed to be registered, alright? So you cannot operate in the city without a valid trade license the 1st of the year, every year. Okay, and there is a penalty if you don't register and you're operating without a valid trade license. But there's no incentive for you to apply early. Answer your question? Okay. Anybody else? Sure? Okay, well, with that, um, on behalf of the mayor, local government, our counselors, the Balmopan City Council, our Trade Department, I'd like to say thank you all for coming out and being a part of this sensitization session. I'd like to thank all our viewers for tuning in this evening. And again, I would like to reiterate that if you have any questions, feel free to call us at the Balmopan City Council, ask for a trade license department, and/or come on in to our offices. And we are there willing to assist and help you through this process. Thank you again and have a pleasant evening. Good night.
Go ahead, so prayer. Lord, speak your word. Use your servant. Open her hearts. Remove blindfolds, that your gospel will shine true. Shift us into your will. Give us your heart. Your heart for the lost. Give us your heart. Your heart that seeks and saves that which is lost. Lord, speak to us in a way we can understand, where we can walk in obedience. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. You may be seated. Let's go to God's Word. Uh, this is a, this is a parable that is known throughout the world. Believers and unbelievers, as a matter of fact, in today's culture, if you just say, "That one is a prodigal son," you automatically know what it means. Even if they're not Christian, they understand who a prodigal son is. Many, many of you are prodigal sons. Say amen? Amen, me too. So it's a very well-known story. But as I've always said about the, the parables of Jesus, the parables of Jesus speak to the kingdom of heaven. And it opens to us an understanding of the kingdom of heaven. And so these parables though very short, are extremely deep, they're extremely timeless, and they are for us. They are for us. And so let's take a closer look at the, the story of the prodigal son. But this morning, I want to focus on the older brother. I want to focus because it's, it's, it's very easy for us to talk about the prodigal son finding God and coming home. And I think we all can understand. And we talk about the Father heart of God, or the Father's heart in this story. But I want to focus a little on the heart of the older brother. Because his heart is also present in the house. We know about the prodigal son heart, how it started. The Bible says that there was a father who had two sons, an older and a younger. And the younger one said, "Father, give me my share of the estate." And he took it and he left. So we see already that this son had a wandering heart. He had an ungrateful heart and he had a squandering heart. How many people have been blessed by living under a godly home? Been given godly guidance, godly advice, and they squander it. They just walk away from it. And the prodigal son began with a heart that wanted to separate itself from the Father. But we give God thanks that as the story evolves and as the prodigal son is out there, they say having his best life. Father is at home praying for him and looking down the road for him. Father is not on his mind, but can we say this morning that he was on the Father's mind? And so this story turns at the point where the prodigal son has squandered all of his inheritance. He is now living with the pigs and eating pig food. And goodness knows how long he is out there at the bottom of the ladder. Who knows? He is at the floor ground, he's on the ground level. I don't know. I know for sure that a hardened heart will keep you there longer than you ought to be. A hardened heart will keep you with the pigs. Some of us will start smell like the pigs, we're eating like the pigs, and we just stay there and life is okay because we will not come to God. But the story turns. And we can begin to see the change in the heart of the son when Jesus said, "When he came to his senses." In other words, he was senseless until he saw his true condition. Have you seen your true condition? Have you seen where you are as opposed to where you used to be and where God wants you to be? The Bible says, "He came to his, his senses." Isn't this the place that heaven begins to rejoice? Isn't this the point that heaven says, "Now that I have your attention among the pigs, I can talk to you?" Our sister in her testimony this morning talked about the goodness of God and enjoying the blessings of God. But then God had to allow her to go to immigration in the city, far away from home, for God to have a one-on-one with God. You see, so sometimes while people are in jail, sometimes while people are in prison, sometimes while you're on the street, you're so drunk and you're, you're in the drain, you're peeing yourself, or maybe it's not that bad and you're at immigration in air condition. But God still separates us for us to find Him because of the Father's heart for us. You might be going through some stuff, but all that God wants to do is to get your attention because your heart isn't where it is supposed to be. And God wants to indeed align your heart with His. See, God is, he is not going to change. God is excellent, he's perfect. The problem is not God, who is the problem? We are, and to make it personal, we are supposed to say, "I am." But when we come to our senses, everything begins to look in its right perspective. Let me tell you something. When you come to your senses, even though you are still eating the pig food, everything has changed. It looks the same, but because the heart has changed, everything is about to change. And so you know what? You will start to know who your true friends are and who the fake ones are. You will start to see that they indeed ate out and drunk out your money. And now that you are broke, they are gone. You begin to get perspective. And then you begin to see that the thing you despise the most, which was your Father's house, is what you really need. When he came to his senses, the perspective came in line. His heart changed. And he said, "I will arise and go home." Heaven began to rejoice. I want you to know this morning that heaven is a place of rejoicing. The angels are rejoicing over the King of Kings. But the heav, the heavens are also rejoicing when every person comes to their senses. The kingdom of heaven is rejoicing when one, tell your neighbor one. We need to understand the number one. We need to understand the number one. Because the number one is important to God. For us, the number one is only important when that one is me. We love it when God moves for us. We love it when God moves on our behalf. And then after we enter into the kingdom and God has moved on our behalf, we need to be careful that we don't develop a jealous heart when God begins to move on another one. You know that's a story? You know that that's in the story? It is not just about the prodigal son, but it's also about that brother who was also a son, fully a son. But his heart, though he was at home, was not aligned with the heart of his father. Neither son was aligned with their father. But one came in line, though he was still in the pig pen. Tell your neighbor big pen. Some of us hate the big pen. We hate the smell, we hate the sight, we have, we hate that we have to clean it. But let me tell you something. For the prodigal son, the pig pen was a good place. It is where he found God. Where he found God. And so he says, "I will go to my Father and I will say, 'I have sinned against you and I have sinned against heaven. I am no longer worthy to be.'" That's a changed heart. It's not a heart that is coming in to demand stuff. It's not a heart that's coming in to demand a place. It's not a heart that's coming to say, "Well, where I was before, I want those privileges that I had before. And if I don't get it..." He has had a change of heart. He who thought that half of the kingdom was his has now found perspective, that nothing is really his. And just to be with the Father is good enough. God must cure our heart that the only thing that we want, remember the secret to godliness and contentment. The secret is to know God and to be satisfied with Him alone. The son's heart, he gets up and he went to his Father. Powerful words, words of turning. I don't know if you're still in the pig pen. I don't know if you're in a bad place, but that bad place can become the very best place for you if you choose to look up and allow God to give you a change of heart. I want us to briefly look at the I want us to briefly look at the heart of the father. So first of all, while the son was leaving it up, some of us as parents, we write them off. He said, "That ungrateful son, that ungrateful daughter, I worked for it. I still give him his half." I, I think as the father gave the son his half, the father was just hoping that just handing the half to him would change his mind, but it didn't. I think that the father's heart, as he was out there squandering, paying Papa's money for prostitutes, paying Papa's money for things that he ought not to be using Papa's money for, Papa would have thought, maybe as he handed the prostitute the money, hopefully the lights would have come on and he would say, "I'm squandering Papa's money on the wrong thing," but it didn't. But the Bible tells us that the father kept looking down the road for his son. I say about hedges and our rehabilitation program that 90% of the people who enter hedges, it's because of a mother or a sister that still has hope,